Welcome, everybody. It's 6 o'clock, so we're getting ready to start. And I'll look in the back room and make sure we're good to go with the WebEx. Everything's good. Okay. And with that, before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Mark Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, as we bow our heads in reverence, we ask for your blessing. Help us to overcome our faults. May we listen before we speak. May we think before we act. May we pray before we offer unjust criticism. Bring us together to work for the common good. We pray, you dear God, above all else. Bless our nation and those who unselfishly serve. May we, with your divine guidance, continue to be a nation which serves as a people of hope and charity. Dear God, we also ask for your healing hands in the recovery of Councilman Rick Spicer's suffering. These things we ask from your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the ideal of liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, July 18, 2022 City Council meeting. And you are able to join this meeting virtually tonight. I will say there are some Internet connectivity problems, so while we are unable to stream it live on YouTube, it will be posted as soon as it's recorded and able to be shared. But for now, people still can join it in real time on WebEx. If you need the WebEx link, you can find it on the city's website, JeffersonCityMo.gov, under Events and Meetings. And then we will post the completed meeting on YouTube as soon as possible. Thank you. We apologize for that convenience. If you do go to the YouTube link or to the page, it should have something on there that says that you can still view it by WebEx. And also, that has been posted on the city's Facebook page. So if you know anyone that is trying to get on and watch and they can't, just tell them to join by WebEx. So thank you for your flexibility with that. And the nice thing about WebEx is it does allow participation from people who want to join as well. With that, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Deacon?
Here.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Hensley?
Present.
Kimna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We do have with us a Boy Scout here, and I would like to invite him to the podium tonight. And you can tell us your name and what school you go to, and maybe what badge you're working on. So we'd love to hear what you're working on. Welcome. And you can come to the podium up here. We have a microphone, and that way we'll be able to hear all of that. Welcome. Glad to have you here tonight.
Thanks. My name's Will Boyer. I'm working for a community. I'm working for a citizen in a community tonight. And the school I go to is St. Joseph's Cathedral. And honestly, I'll be going into Elias next year, this year. So, yeah.
Great. Well, we're really happy to have you here tonight. We're glad that you're here to participate and listen in to our council meeting, and wish you the best of luck working on that citizenship in the community. And if you have any further questions, you can certainly reach out to any of us, myself included, and any of council members if you would like to know more or learn more about it. And you have some people with you this evening. If you want to introduce them, you're welcome to.
Okay. Thank you.
So, hi, Mom.
Hi, Mom.
I'm Mr. Boyer. I'm Will Boyer.
Great. Well, we appreciate you being here also, and we're glad to have you here. And we hope that you enjoy the meeting. Any questions of council? Or any questions of us at the moment?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Well, glad to have you here, and if you have anything else, just let us know.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
And item five is a budget update. So I will go over this briefly. The budget, the first budget meeting will be Monday night, a week from tonight. So typically, that's when we really go into depth and detail about the budget and the mayor's budget letter. And that was emailed out to council, so everybody should have a copy of that. And I'll run through some of the highlights. And the budget itself will be posted online, I believe, tomorrow. So that will be able for the public to access that on the city's website and be shared. Council did get an electronic link so that they could have a preview of that. And how this works is the city administrator does the budget and then presents it to the mayor, and then I get to look at it and make changes, and then submit it to council. And after the last council meeting, there was some interest in having it expedited so that council could have a little more time to look at it, especially with some bills that we are working on. And as we work with the ARPA discussion, and we work with the employee pay increase and some of those items, I wanted to make sure and get something to council much sooner than typical. So I think that was in your inbox on Friday, so everybody had the weekend hopefully to take a glance at it. And I also know Councilman Hensley did send some proposed items that could be looked at for updated. And I do appreciate Councilman Hensley's email, and also the collaborative nature that we are taking. I mean, we always do, but I feel like especially this year that we'll continue to work together as we work through that and make changes. So the budget letter always goes with the budget, and I will, it's several pages long, so typically I go through every single paragraph at the first budget meeting. I will go through some highlights of it. So I'm not 100% prepared, but I am, right? Because I worked on it last week with Steve and Sheila, so I want to thank Steve and Sheila for spending extra time last week to get it where it needs to be. So, sorry. One second. So, usually I come into meetings a little more prepared. I'm not 100% prepared because, so my mom is great, she's doing fine. So she had open-heart surgery today, and she's fine. And so I feel like I walked into council, and I feel like I'm not 100% like, ready. So I am ready to go through it, but what I'm asking is that Sheila and Steve help keep me on track. Because we, in fact, we went over this several times in your office, so I know exactly what I'm saying, but I feel like at the moment I don't. But I will say how amazing it is that they can take your heart out and fix whatever's wrong with it is just amazing and a miracle. So I have to say how cool it is and how amazing it is and how wonderful it is that those kind of things can be done. And I know my mom would absolutely kill me if she knew I was saying any of that. So she's fine. And I also want to say that whatever is going on with Councilman Spencer's, I'm sorry, Spicer's son, that I pray for the best for him as well. So, we've got this. So I'm going to run through the budget letter. And so, the budget, a few highlights. It is effective November 1. Do you want to thank our employees for working hard to get this to us? And it is only a plan and a certainty that it will change. And the fourth paragraph says, it goes without saying, that I want to reiterate the importance of maintaining a competitive salary structure and plan for our employees. This is the principal asset that we have as a city by far, our employees. And that we, they serve the citizens with a commitment for providing the quality of life that we enjoy and the level of service that we enjoy in the city. So I think it is important that we face some of these economic challenges. And I know that from the overall budget perspective, I also want to reiterate that I am comfortable with using some of our general fund to balance the budget with an understanding that a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for revenue loss will be used for salaries. And the effect of the above, which is what I have proposed, restores the general fund balance to 15%. And while I understand that it is still below the 17% fund balance that is outlined as a guideline, that the City of Jefferson financial policies also show that it is above the current general fund balance of the 14.38%. So I am very comfortable in that, in that I was able to, in the budget that I have presented, get it to the 15%, which is higher than the 14.38 that we are at. And if council would like to increase it to the 17%, that I would suggest using more of the ARPA funds, which reduces the amount of ARPA available for other expenditures. And we do have some bills on the council meeting this evening that are introduced that deal with some ARPA expenditures. I know that there will be some changes made to that. So, and I also believe it's very important for the staff to closely monitor, and for all of us, future revenues. I was aggressive on those numbers, and I understand that, but I'm also confident that we will be able to do that. And then in order to accomplish that, I do recommend removing or delaying some of the ARPA projects that were previously outlined in the city council, designating 1,966,000 as revenue loss for the general fund in regard to the ARPA revenue loss adjustments. So I would propose the following. Reduce the Hyde Park burn building allocation from 1,925,000 to 925,000. And we do have a pending ARPA request in with the county right now for funding this project. So I believe that for the remaining, that we could also pursue some grant funds, perhaps some federal earmarks, or some debt financing if needed. So I want to make it very clear that while I have taken the burn building out of the current ARPA list, that it is a top and very high priority. And I just believe there are other ways that we can achieve that, and look forward to doing that together. And also look forward to our partners at the county for working with us on the burn building, because there is a substantial benefit to the fire districts in the county as well. So I have shifted that a bit, but I want to just make it clear again that it is still a priority. And then item two, reducing the downtown association item from the 150,000 originally requested to 20,000, because after speaking with them, they currently have the matching funds of 20,000. And certainly, I know I have not had a chance to visit with Councilwoman Wiseman, who has brought that up. So if there are adjustments to be made or ways that they can find those matching funds, I know they would certainly be open to that, but they currently have an amount of 20,000 available. So I would reduce that to match what they have available to match. Item three is to remove the $600,000 and $35,000 allocation for the police department body and car cameras, and use that from the public safety tax. And so I think that is also a benefit, perhaps to get them sooner, but I also think that we know that's a priority. So right now, it's just, they would eventually be funded through the public safety tax eventually, so this just moves it to that now. And then also, item four is reducing the allocation for the Capital City Soccer Complex from 100,000 to 50,000. Item five, removing the $200,000 allocation for the Fire Department radios from the ARPA funds, and instead from the public safety tax, which is very similar to what we did on the police department car cameras and body cams. And this might be closer to a $355,000 cost, according to Chief Schofield, so we will monitor that, but it can also be phased in. And then additionally, I've included in the 2023 budget, the salary increase that was last discussed at the city council meeting, and that was at the July 5 meeting. So we really have before us on the salary piece, we have basically three salary proposals. I would say probably substitute one, substitute two, and substitute three. Substitute one would have been the original 5% that Mr. Kroll brought forward in April. Substitute two is what we've been working on, which is currently on the informal. At the time I did my budget, that's what I worked with, so that's what I have included in here is substitute two, which is on the informal calendar. Substitute three, Councilman Hensley sent out last week, which you all have in front of you, which he mentioned that he will likely make that substitution tonight. So the reason I have two in here is because that's what I contemplated when I did the budget. And I also feel that it is a good and valid substitute, and I think that it addresses a lot of the issues we were trying to with salaries and remaining competitive in this market. So regardless of what happens tonight, whether it is substitute two or three, I appreciate council's collaborative nature in coming up with some changes to the bills so that they can find something that everybody can move forward with, and do really hope wholeheartedly that council will pass one of those two substitutes this evening. Let me see where I'm at here. Probably some of this is maybe more going to be meant for, I think, next week when we really dig into the budget, as far as, we do know that keeping up with personnel, facilities, and vehicles is always our big challenge. And I mentioned about the Parks and Rec, that I haven't reviewed it in full detail, but it was reviewed at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. And I mentioned a few things about that in the budget and their fund balance, that they also use, Parks and Rec and Forestry for '23 uses 3,233,000 of their fund balance. I have the revenues listed in here, that my budget includes a 9.38 or 3 million, 3.2 million increase in revenues from the FY '22 adopted budget. And then talking about general revenues, an increase of 3.21 compared to 21. Let me see, what else here? Salary and wage. Where am I at here? Yes. Okay, so I'll go down to that. And then we'll be also talking about the salary and wage adjustments and the evergreen solutions there here this evening, so we will have some discussion about that as well. And then some mayor's changes and additions, that I recommend moving the cost of the Juneteenth holiday, which is $78,000, to the public safety tax fund as the entire cost relates to public safety staff. Also recommend moving the increased cost for health and dental insurance for public safety staff, which is 169,000, to the public safety tax fund, since those both address public safety personnel. And I did both of those to have the impact on the general fund so that we could move forward more comfortably with the employee pay increase. I increased the budget, or I'm sorry, building construction fees line item revenue by 50,000 in anticipation of larger building projects in FY '23, as we know that we have some larger building projects on the horizon. The budget for transit does not include reduction in fare revenue, so Councilman Deacon, if you were to propose that. I do still have the fares included at the full fare. I know that there was a talk of potentially reducing that, but I do contemplate keeping it as it currently is. I recommend removing or delaying some of the ARPA projects previously identified by city council, and designating 1.966 million as revenue loss for the general fund, which I mentioned at the beginning of the letter. Really did not fund any pink sheet items, zero, other than there was one item, funding an animal control vehicle pink sheet item from the reserve for animal shelter restricted fund balance, and that was a pretty specific item, so that's why I suggested funding it out of those specific funds that can only be used for things like that. Some of our big challenges for '23 include departmental budget reductions, and perhaps talking to our directors about what can be reduced. Commodity prices will be a challenge, capital expenditures. We know with our aged equipment that those will continue to be a challenge. Replacement of vehicles, and we tend to fall behind in buildings and grounds. Under transit, the general fund subsidy in the past, of course, was lower due to cares. There were items in transit that have been previously suggested by the Lime Cooler Consulting Group and have not necessarily been implemented, including a bus fare increase, which I did not propose the increase in this budget. Under airport, in order to keep the airport from making expenditures or service reductions, have recommended the use of the airport fund balance subsidy. And then there's a bullet point for debt financing, although I don't have any recommended at this time. It is a potential option for some things like construction and maintenance of facilities, vehicle acquisition, and those sorts of things. General fund and reserve fund balance, have some details there about the, of course, the minimum adopted by council. If it is not achieved, that the city administrator and finance director are required to present the city council a strategy to meet the fund balance within two fiscal years. The current general fund balance reserve estimate for '22 year-end is 14.38, and the proposed '23 budget that I presented is 15%. So this includes the expenses of 37 million. The fund, the unreserved fund balance is approximately 760,000, which is below the 17%. However, historically, not all of the current year's budgeted expenses will be spent, and we currently have not been at that amount of 17% for quite some time, although I do feel that if there is a time to utilize that, this would be the time, as we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to fund the employee pay increase, and thankful to have options that council likely will be favorable to. And then the American Rescue Plan has budgeted a certain amount for stormwater, so I do have noted here how that part was already decided on, and that we also have some potential revenue loss in my budget. And what did I forget? So that's an overview of the budget, and then I think I outlined the ARPA changes. Did I get over all of them? So, and the next item on our agenda is ARPA discussion. So we're going to lead into the ARPA discussion from this. But back on the budget piece itself, and I know Councilman Hensley also sent an email asking to revise the budget to reflect his option three, or substitute three, and we can certainly do that as well, but I think we could still take action tonight on the proposed informal calendar item.
I'm not sure I understand what you meant by that. Yeah, that was to make sure that option three was on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, but with that, I typically would do this at a budget meeting and go through in detail, so I will ask if council has any questions at this time on either the budget letter, anything included in it, or the budget itself, if they've had a chance to look at the budget. Any questions at this time? And we will now lead into item six, which is the ARPA funds discussion. And we have several bills that are introduced tonight for ARPA, so we will run through those individually. On the ARPA discussion itself, I did mention the proposed changes that I have suggested, which are not reflected in the bills introduced, because I just made those suggestions, the timing getting out a little bit ahead of where council is. And I know that Councilman Hensley is also going to propose some potential changes to those bills introduced. Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. And if it's all right, if we could just take each of those bills as they come in the normal course of the agenda.
Sure.
I think that might, that's my personal suggestion, anyway.
I think that makes sense, and that's a good idea. Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes, thank you. At our last meeting, we talked about the downtown beautification suggestion, and at this time, as I promised last time, I brought somebody to come talk about that, and so I'd like to ask Mr. Wagner to come chat a little bit about those funds and how he anticipates maybe raising some of those funds as a matching mechanism.
Welcome, Mr. Wagner.
Well, thank you, council, mayor, staff. I do appreciate you. Three minutes still?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just set my timer here so I stay on track.
Oh, it's five, I'm sorry. You're at five.
Oh, five. Very good. So Gus Wagner, whoops, Gus Wagner here. I know many of you personally, and the rest of you I know on Facebook. Downtown business owner, current or past member of almost every civic or nonprofit board in this community. I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen and expressing my willingness to work with any council member or staff or the mayor to do a little more beautification in the downtown area. I do need and want to stress that I am representing, not representing any organization or individual other than myself tonight. So the topic here is the downtown beautification through the ARPA program. And my ask is that we keep the idea to do the beautification through the planting beds, taking care of the planting beds that we currently have, and maybe expanding that project through.
Hello, mayor.
Through, I'll be there in a minute. To expand that through most, or if not all, of the downtown district. I think everybody's familiar with the planning beds and their current state here in downtown Jefferson City. It's the internet.
I think we're trying to mute.
Right.
If you're not on mute, please do so. Thank you.
So I've had the fortunate opportunity to travel around this country, seeing many of the towns that we compete against, and towns and cities that we compete against, not just in Missouri, but across the country for business and visitors. And I've been to more than half of the state capital cities and state capital grounds in this country as well, and have seen and taken note of what they've done in their adjacent downtown areas. Bringing that information home, I see a lot of opportunity for improvement here in how we do this here in Jefferson City. If we look to the downtowns like Chicago or Kansas City or Branson for inspiration, you can see, those of you who've been in those communities can see what they've done in their downtown areas, especially when it comes to planting or beautification through plantings and protecting those plantings. If we look at, I know often in Jefferson City, we compare ourselves to other state capitals. I am hard-pressed to think of a state capital community who has a downtown with plantings in distress as much as Jefferson City is. So literally, in this case, we can say that the grass on the other side is greener and the plantings are as well. So we have a possibility of plus or minus 90 planting beds throughout the entire Jefferson City downtown corridor. Most of the current planting beds are on High Street and Madison Street. There are some sprinkling of others throughout the community, but there are a lot of recent tree plantings that you see on Capitol Avenue, which are just overgrown green spaces at this time. I just drove through there on the way here and noticed that those grasses are very tall. But we did get rain the other day. There's also nebulous information, as I talk to our fellow business owners in the downtown district, whose responsibility it is to take care of those plantings, among other beautification responsibilities in the downtown area. So there could be an opportunity, whether it needs funding or not, to increase communication between the city and the business owners in that district, as far as whose responsibilities those are. We look at the planting beds, just, I just glanced down the 100 block while I go. My office is in 100 block. I notice dirt squares. I notice planting beds at different levels, tree roots, other obstacles are underneath the ground there. I notice many who have some plantings in them, but none outside of the bank area there between Hawthorne and Central, which are taken care of by those banks and funded by those banks. We have a lot of room for improvement right there. And then if you look to the 200 block, even more area for improvement. So one of the top ARPA suggestions when they released the program was for community beautification, and that's kind of what has spurred this conversation. I do realize, I completely realize, the city has a long list of infrastructure needs, including employee salaries. And please, if you can get that up to like 25, that'd be awesome as well. But this is an improvement in our community, that we would not have to finance the whole expenditure, that would go great lengths to improving our city morale, our city perception, and city pride from our residents and from our visitors, because it's a very visible I estimate, and I've talked to several vendors, for fencing and for planting and for planting management if needed, and routed up to the very highest numbers for this ballpark. management if needed, and routed up to the very highest numbers for this ballpark estimate of cost of a installation for all 90 beds at $300,000. Again, this is a very high estimate. I'm sure that there are local providers who could do this much more affordably. It has been suggested from other communities I've discussed this with and from other examples I've seen in other communities, that these planting beds do have fencing around them of some sort, some sort of barrier to prevent the trampling of any new plantings or existing plantings. This is a reason apparently why we have the dirt squares now is because they get trampled and they don't get replaced.
I think we're right about at the five minutes so we can have you.
Okay, very good. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. I am not an expert on this. I'm just bringing this opportunity to the council and willing to have discussions tonight or in the future to try to get this done.
Councilman Deacon?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad there's an interest. It's been a sore spot for years. It's ugly. Every planter, I mean, it's a hodgepodge. My biggest concern, if you put plantings back in there, I don't think they're going to be taken care of. You're going to have to have a maintenance contract and living things, some things can do better even six foot away from each other. I'd often thought that if you just, for that amount of money, you may be able to look at some cast iron grates that sit over there with, and people put some planting pots on top of them. Unless you put in some remonitors, or I think it's some type of remonitors that the bank has, they're all going to be ugly. It's truly a hodgepodge of cigarette receptacles and the maintenance would be the hard one. And I think we have plantings, we have, same thing we're going to have again. So that was my concern. What, do you have an overall plan?
At this time, we went pie in the sky to try to get that budget number, to establish what that number is. That includes fencing around all of the planting beds in existence or potentially in the future to protect that. And we're talking wrought iron fence, you know, a couple of feet high to do that. And regarding, and I appreciate you recognizing the situation, the responsibility for maintenance currently falls under the Parks Department. That's who takes care of those planting beds now. That's who just mulched them, as many of them as it could just last week, that's who plants the new trees when some folks apparently pour chemicals into the planting beds and kill the trees. That's why you have so many immature trees across town at this time, outside of the tornado and outside of the Capitol Avenue reconstruction redevelopment. But.
I don't think the problem is trampling. That's a raised bed. People aren't standing over them. It's just a lack of good growing conditions. I mean, they've tried a lot of different scenarios. And I think the parks just take care of the trees. I don't think their responsibility goes as far as the plantings. I may be wrong, but in the past, I thought it was each individual shop on it, but it's been nebulous.
Yep.
But something that is more permanent and doesn't live, I think is going to be a lot more advantageous to the beautification than, than trying to grow the same thing up and down.
Sure. Being involved in the downtown area, both professionally and in volunteer roles, I've seen, I've seen many times during the large events, living windows, Thursday night lives, any of the shopping events, Friday nights in general, just people trampling through those beds and tossing trash and pouring their drinks out, et cetera. So I'm sure it's not 100 percent the fault of the trample, but it's a, it's a big contributor.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes, thank you. Can you talk a little bit about fundraising and your thoughts about that?
Sure, sure. I'll just say right now that for the matching funds, whether it's 150,000 or less or more, I volunteer myself at no cost to go out and raise these funds or to help whoever would like to lead the effort to go out and raise these funds. I'd also like to say that I'll go ahead and make the commitment right now to put $1,000 of my own money into the Parks Foundation with the, the goal of funding, helping to fund this project. We'd only need 149 people and more people at a $1,000 donation to make those funds.
Thank you.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. And just to clarify, the project you're talking about for beautification is, is not a downtown association project, correct?
That is correct. As I stated, I'm not here representing the downtown association, although I am on the board of the downtown association at this time. The association does not have the funds to do this and every grant consultant I have discussed this opportunity with has recommended that the funding organization or the, the, the leader on this be a government entity, a government foundation, which is why the Parks Foundation would be a perfect leader on this effort.
So to the extent that they say that they have $20,000 identified for some sort of project.
Right. That's for, that's for additional project. You know, beautification projects right now in downtown include the, the planting bed, I'm sorry, not the planting beds, but the hanging plants throughout downtown, which is a split cost between the association funded through membership dues and fundraising, along with the city, who contributes an equal amount to that. And those look great, but they're, if you, if you look down from there, there's a lot of dirt squares.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Councilwoman Ward?
Yes.
Do you have any plans in place for maintenance costs and how that plan would look like moving forward because investing that kind of money and then not having the funds moving forward annually to keep those beds up to date, you know?
Sure, sure. No, it's a consideration that I've looked at, had informal discussions with interested parties as far as what that next step might be. But, you know, as I mentioned earlier, to my information that I've acquired, those planting beds do fall under parks and they are many, there's, there's a lot of interested personnel over at the Parks Department about this project, but they have obviously not taken a position or any discussion on the Parks Board about this either. I started at the top and wanted to work my way down here.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Sure thing. I'm always available to answer questions or continue to ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're still on item six, the ARPA funds discussion. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a number of comments to make on the topic and then some, some actions to propose. But first, I just want to say that we are all with you and your family and your mother as she recovers. And we pray for, for her strength and her, her quick recovery and for your family, also for strength and, and as you are there for her. And of course, we are in awe of thanks of the, for the doctors and the other medical staff who work these sort of unimaginable to the rest of us miracles every day. In our family, we experienced this a few years ago and it's still one of the most amazing things, especially to happen in a time of chaotic trauma and uncertainty. So we are, we are with you and your family, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman. Amen to that. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. My hope tonight is that we will approve the $2,500 essential worker ARPA payments that are pending in bill 2022-029, that we approve the communications operator pay adjustment and the interim salary increases described in substitute number three to bill 2022-009, which we'll get to when, when we're on the informal calendar. And that we will vote on and approve for bill drafting five proposed and pending uses of ARPA dollars, one of which will fund the interim salary increase through the end of the fiscal year and another will return our general fund, fund balance to 17 percent. And we would get there, I hope, with funding through a few revisions to the pending proposals sitting in bills introduced tonight. That is a lot, but I know that we can do it and I also believe firmly that we have to do it. The ARPA and interim salary increase proposals reflected in the revision that I shared on July 11th reflect, in my opinion, the best overall package that we could realistically put together right now in terms of balancing funding for employees, city equipment and infrastructure in the community. This latest iteration was the product of several months of committed council discussion, collaboration, negotiation and hard work. If it adopts this most recent proposal, the council would restore the general fund again to 17 percent, as discussed at length during our last meeting, and fund a pay increase to included employees equal to 4 percent of the average city employee's salary through the end of the current fiscal year, which I believe is in keeping with the mayor's request. Last meeting that we fund a critically needed salary increase now and give her the opportunity to find funding within the FY '23 budget to make those increases permanent. I know that I was involved in the meeting last week from a different time zone, but I'm pretty sure I got that, that part. I just really fear that if we don't complete these pieces of work in the very near future and certainly before turning to budget committee meetings on the FY '23 budget, I'm just really afraid that all windows would effectively close until next fiscal year and I don't think that we can tolerate that. So for these reasons, I believe it is vital that we advance these items tonight, that we finally approve the ones that we can and that we set ourselves to completing all unfinished business on, on these two topics during our August 1st meeting. So again, that was a lot. But I would like to open it now, if that's okay, and, and bring up for motions to initially approve and for, for bill drafting. The items on the version three framework that was emailed today, if you have this in printout, it's the third page. And just to remind everyone, there, there are five items that are listed as proposed or newly proposed on this list. The CVB lost revenue item, the downtown beautification planter matching funds item, the organizational review study cost set aside, the revenue loss item to, through a number of machinations, return the fund balance to 17 percent. And then the pay increase described in substitute number three to bill 009 that's on for tonight. And I know that those last two were the, the last ones to join the list. So if the, if the sponsors or champions of those other three would like to take the first crack, you're welcome to it.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley. Councilwoman Wiseman?
Thank you, Councilman Hensley. I appreciate your work on this. I think, I thank you, council, for your collaborative work on this. I know that everybody's worked really hard. I do appreciate everybody's discussion about this and I do feel like this is the most fiscally responsible move that we can make. And so at this time, I think that we have discussed in depth the CVB lost revenue, the organizational review and the downtown beautification, and I would propose those for initial approval to move to the city council for ordinances.
And which three were those again? Councilwoman Wiseman?
The CVB lost revenue, $175,000, the downtown beautification of $150,000 and the organizational review study cost for, to be set aside for $150,000.
So there's a motion in second. Any further discussion? And Emily, you got that? Roll call, please.
Deacon?
Yes.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye. Bill passes. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would propose that the council approve for bill drafting the $930,000 to reimburse the fund balance and get it back up to 17 percent. I understand that technically that is not exactly how that would go. And $91,442 to pay in, for the pay increase related to bill 2022-009 substitute three.
Second. And Mr. Crowe?
Good. I think technically we can't use the ARPA funds to contribute to a, another fund, a rainy day fund, I think is what they call it. But essentially, I think what you're saying is if you use it for revenue loss and allocate that for salaries, then that would, would that not achieve the same?
That's not what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
You sent me an email on June 27th where you said you reminded about the status of the fund balance and said in order to get back up to 17 percent, we need approximately I contemplated filling that fund balance deficit with revenue loss from the ARPA funds. I took, I guess I took that directly. I don't know what that was supposed to mean otherwise. I rounded it up to 930 because I assumed we'd be a little farther down, but.
If, if I can chime in here, so the ARPA funds, one of the things that are not allowed for use of ARPA funds is essentially to restore a bank account. You can't just say, we, we want to replenish a savings account. That is, that's one of the things that you cannot use it for. However, there is a mechanism where that would essentially be where you fund other projects that are currently funded by the general fund and replace that funding with ARPA funding. And then those savings to the general fund can then be used to replenish the, 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 the general fund by not spending the general fund and spending the ARPA funds instead. And so it's, it's a little bit of an exercise, but what you can't do is say, take $930,000, put it in our bank account.
Okay.
You, you have to identify a project that it's going to be used for. And so, so I think what Steve was saying is if, if we were to do this and to use, to accomplish the goal of this, to restore the fund balance back to seven, we need 17 percent. We need to find a project that is currently being funded by fund, or by general fund and fund it with ARPA funds so that saved general fund money can go back into the fund balance.
Okay, I follow you. It seems that salaries are the very worst item to choose. They are not a project. They are a constantly recurring expense.
And it's, 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 project's probably not the right, right.
Well, in any event, it's a recurring expense.
Right concept to use, an, an expense.
Okay. I will, I will also say, I'm sorry, I will also say, I sent this, I think almost to everybody who's sitting around this table a week ago and it was pretty clear what I was suggesting and Steve's email is unmistakable in its meaning. There is no nuance there whatsoever to lead someone to think that you can't do what I'm proposing. So I would just say in the future, you know, following up to say, hey, you can't exactly do that would, you know, have been pretty helpful. But if there are $930,000 of other non-salary projects that we can, that staff can identify in the next couple of days, if we're just trading one general fund project for these funds and then the difference would go into fund balance, the general fund fund balance and get it to 17 percent, I don't initially have a problem with that. But putting it to salaries, I know, I mean, that's just, I think, setting a risky tone that we will have a lot more discussion on, I think. But I, I would, I would amend my motion to ask, to direct staff to identify $930,000 of general fund funded projects that could be swapped for this 930, the net effect being the increase of the general fund fund balance to or in excess of 17 percent.
There's a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Oh, and, and, sorry, the motion also includes the $91,442 pay increase related to bill 2022-009 sub three.
Councilman Lester?
So the only question I have is, is you're saying 930,000, but from the mayor's budget, yours, your amount was almost twice that to, to try and bring the fund balance back up. What's, so why is there such a difference?
I don't know. I got my number from Steve in that June 27th email.
And I don't, I don't have that memo in front of me. Yeah, and I don't, I don't have that memo in front of me. You've got, the, the fund balance number at the end of June, to bring that back up, was about 930,000.
So the figure that Councilman Hensley is speaking of is actually to return the fund balance to the 17% level as of today, essentially. The figures that the mayor has spoken about are in regards to the FY23 budget. Those figures are based on what she has in the FY23 budget.
The 900 was at the end of June. The fund balance then, as I recall, was about 14.3%. So that difference to bring it up to the 17 was about that 930,000, so. I don't know if that's exactly where we are now or not.
And that made sense to me based on following every month's fund balance report. Yeah.
And that would be a report that we discussed Thursday at Finance Committee, but it's, it has not changed since last month when we presented the 14.38%.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the motion or discussion? Councilman Spencer?
Councilman Hensley, with, with those 933, or $930,000 number that we're looking at, that would be for, for projects, not personnel costs or anything like that. It would be.
Yeah, I would say it would need to be projects, or it would need to be expenditures that are not recurring.
Correct. That, I just wanted to make sure that you're.
Yeah. And I mean, that was, that's the motion anyway.
Mr. Crowe?
So essentially, it's a reimbursement of one-time expenditures in our current year budget.
Let's give it a shot.
Period.
Okay. And so if, if, if this passes, next meeting, we come back, hopefully sooner than that. I, I can't imagine it takes too long to find less than a million dollars and this kind of stuff. If we could be given a list of options as soon as possible so that we could wrap this up, that would be ideal.
Good. The, the significance for me is it's a difference between new expenditure on projects. This would be a reimbursement in our existing year, which is what the revenue replacement piece would allow. I think I got it.
Correct. Yeah, I think so. And.
So, so are those within, what, what you set out for ARPA within that category of operational expenditure reimbursement? Is that some of those funds that you're talking about or something else?
It would be things that we've expended during our current fiscal year. Well, I'm thinking like chemicals or a lot, whatever, different one-time kind of expenses. They would have, they would have to be general fund expenditure. Yeah, general fund. Because you can't reimburse the general fund with like, something that would have otherwise been paid for by the public, or by the capital improvement sales tax, so.
No, I meant, I meant the Cap, Capitol Avenue tearing down of Prague homes and, and those, those are one-time expenses.
Yes, but we also don't want to get mucked up in federal acquisition law. So, so we're going to have some options. We'll bring them to you, and they will be as string-free as possible. But it's things like that, yes, yeah. Just, just to make sure I'm real clear here. But some of them may be what you might consider as one-time operational expenses. The only thing I can think of offhand real quick is chemical expenditures or something like that. Because we're reimbursing an expenditure that's already occurred, essentially. And we'll try to give you a list of, of different kinds of options.
And Councilman Hensley, I know you mentioned trying to come back, you know, as soon as possible, so our next meeting in August, or we're having our first budget meeting a week from tonight, but that doesn't relate to, it doesn't affect the informal calendar bill nine with the salary adjustment, correct? They're not tied together?
No, certainly not. No, and, and tonight, tonight, I think, I think we can still approve this request, approve this item pending approval of the project or the expenditures identified by staff.
Okay. Because I would just, I mean, this would go into effect, you know, as soon as possible. I just wanted to make sure that didn't delay the, the informal, I thought, so we'll figure a way to.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I think, I think we'll be all right moving both of these pieces of this at once, and I don't think we have the time to, to risk wasting on another two weeks, so.
I agree. Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because you had mentioned the future meetings for, so just wanted to make sure we move forward on that. Thank you. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify with Mr. Melman. So when the feds relaxed the requirements on ARPA dollars and put the $10 million kind of threshold, it still talks about the fact that you cannot use that for.
Replenishing cash reserves is, is, yeah.
So that's still.
Yeah, that's.
There's still some provisions.
There are still some provisions, yes. While, while the rules were loosened significantly, restoring cash reserves is still not a, an authorized use.
Thank you.
Or direct, direct restoring. You can't just write a check to use a savings account.
Any further questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I would, now, now that we've gotten through those items, I would like to move that the Council adopt the version three ARPA framework as circulated tonight, and now identifying also the action that we just took on those five items. It's, all I'm, all I'm asking to do is update the, the framework we're working from right now as we move forward.
Second.
Okay. Did you get that, Mrs. Donaldson? Councilwoman Ward?
I just have a question for clarification. Page one says a 4% pay increase, and then page two says 2,040 increase per employee.
Page one and two of what?
So is it a 4% average?
It's, it's 4% of the average employee salary.
Okay.
Which equals $2,040.
Okay, for each.
For each.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilman Spencer?
But we're not, we're not talking about that yet because it's.
Correct. I'm not even entirely sure.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Because I did have a question on, once we get, thank you.
Where we are. I'm not sure. I'm sorry?
She was talking about this.
Oh. You're talking about sub to, no.
Average on this, it just says four.
No, we're, I'm talking about the spreadsheet deal here.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we'll get to that on the informal, I think, right?
Yes.
Great.
Councilman Lester?
So again, on, on, on this framework for the Hyde Park burn, you have a reduction of 325,000. And in the mayor's, it's, it's basically saying half that because we think from the county and other sources we can get. So I would, I would think we would, we would be, the framework would, would reflect more what the mayor's budget has.
I would disagree. The mayor's draft budget was sent to us on Friday. We've been working on this for months. We have no idea where the county's going to come down. Even moving forward tonight, we're not approving any of these things except potentially for the essential worker payment. These are all just bills introduced or, or just bills initially voted on. So really what we're doing is teeing it up for final approval of something at our next, at our next meeting. But we have no idea what the county's going to do.
Right. But at the same time, I don't know if there's that much of a rush.
I think there's a tremendous rush.
Or Hyde Park.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Do you want to restate the motion, by the way? Just, was there Mr. Mollman? No?
Yeah. So consistent with some guidance that I put out last week, I just wanted to remind the Council that if there's any projects here where the city is wanting to, in the future, look for some grant funding to assist, if you full, if you, if you fund the full amount, you, you will essentially remove yourself from eligibility to then seek future grant funding. So, so I believe, just easy, easy math, the police body cameras in this third page at 455 reflects a number that would be the local match, and that the full project cost, I think it's a little bit closer to 635,000, so that is looking essentially at $180,000 grant. So I would make a, a very strong suggestion that if any of these projects, and specifically the body camera, are, are looking to then use some future grant money, that we specifically designate it as a local grant match.
Yeah, I appreciated that, that advice, and I've got some motions teed up for later on to achieve that end.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yeah, so, Councilor, does that mean that we should not approve this, this table because we don't want something with numbers out there? Or because our ordinance, I understand the way we're going to pass our ordinance is to omit some of those numbers to, to just eliminate that language, I guess?
Right. So, so the, this document, the way, the way, at least I understand, I think staff understands it, is that this is a framework for working forward and, and moving into final passage. I think the only thing that I'm really concerned about, and the only thing that the federal government and, and grant providers can really point to is the appropriation. So this is, for lack of a better term, this is a wish list, wish list that Council is providing to staff. We will then take the appropriate action to turn it into a bill for final approval. We really only need to worry about at final approval, because none of this is budgeted yet.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure these numbers, we're not going to mess up anything.
I don't, I, I do not believe so.
Mrs. Perry?
And I do want to make sure that Council understands that the money that we're speaking of from the county is also considered grant money. We have discussed that in terms of coming from the county, but it is still federal grant money, and they are serving as a pass-through agency. So those funds will still apply.
Thank you. I think I heard recently maybe that there was, it's been a busy five days also, so I can't remember exactly where I heard it. Though I have some guesses, that we might hear from them in the next few days even on some decision. So we should have, hopefully we'll have information on that point well in advance of our next Council meeting, I hope.
I attended the last week's county commission meeting, and.
It was you?
That might have been.
Yeah.
And they did talk about their process, that they'd closed the application process, and they were going to, the three of the county commissioners review all of the requests, which were more than what they had budgeted, of course, but they were going to see if there was agreement among the three of them of what might move on to the next round. So we should hopefully know more. I'll be sure to stay in touch. And I did speak at the county commission meeting also, and just told them we look forward to coordinating and partnering with them, too. So do we have, do you want to mention what the motion is, Emily?
The motion is to adopt version three framework, including the items that were approved tonight.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Just a few other comments, and then I'll stop the filibuster. I really want to sincerely and publicly renew my commitment, and I think I speak for everybody up here, when I say the Council's commitment to working together in open and good faith manner as we go through this coming budget process. I think it's been clear for a while, but it's quite clear now that it's going to be very rough. And I would also put up the suggestion right now, which has probably already occurred to the mayor and to the city administrator, that you may want to begin coming up with a draft adjusted version of a budget to propose that takes into account actions that the Council might take at our next meeting. Of course, we haven't had the votes on it yet, and it's not all going to look exactly like it looks right now in the bills pending or in, on the, on the framework. It's pretty clear. But if even a substantial portion of this falls the way it's currently lined up, it's really, really going to affect how you've structured the draft FY23 budget. So rather than, you know, not doing anything about it for two weeks, which I don't think you would do, but rather than just waiting and seeing, it, it might be good to get started on that now, just to see what Plan B would look like. I would also say, so for purposes of lining ourselves up for a smooth-ish landing in the near future, I would suggest two things. One would be that any ARPA spending proposal that we approved for bill drafting tonight that's coming up for first reading next week, I think it's a good idea for those bills to come pre-check marked, which means that we, it's, it's just a notification, an indication that someone plans to seek suspension of the rules so that we can all, we can second and third read and vote on an item the same meeting where it comes up for first reading. It happens not infrequently, and on these, on these particular items, I mean, we've been having this discussion since it was cold outside, I think. So maybe that's just how it feels to me at this point. But I think, I think that would be a good thing to do so that we could wrap that stuff up, the ARPA stuff up together, and not drag that out any longer. And finally, again, in the interest of, in spirit of cooperation and not wanting to waste time or effort and to avoid potential confusion, as Chair of the Budget Committee, I think, I think it may be a very good idea, and a worthwhile one, to consider postponing our first couple of budget meetings, which are set for next Monday and next Thursday. And I say that because, I guess, mentioned a moment ago with my suggestion about, you know, maybe a Plan B, I, it really, I don't think would do a whole lot of good to come and have a draft budget presented if there is even a, you know, significant likelihood that it's going to look a whole lot different in a couple of weeks. And I think we'll have our answers, at least most of our answers, by August 1st, by our meeting on August 1st. So unless there is strong objection from anyone, I think August 4th, the Thursday after our Council meeting, our next Council meeting, I think it would be a good idea perhaps to hold off until August 4th for our first Budget Committee meeting. I think that still gives us plenty of time to work through. If, and if more time than that, if a little more time than that is needed, I am happy to oblige. I, it's just, it's, it's not important that we just hold a meeting, right? What's important is that we conduct this process in the right way and in the most thorough and straightforward and efficient and non-confusing ways we can. So unless there is strong objection from anyone, I will announce the postponement of the first two budget meetings and have our first scheduled budget meeting on August 4th in this room at the normally scheduled time.
Any objections? And I would ask, yeah, Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I, I don't have an objection. I, I think that's a great idea. My, my comment was, do you think it would be appropriate to hold back on posting the mayor's budget letter until we make sure that's a final document? Maybe it is final, but.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak for, try to instruct the mayor.
That's a good question. dated, maybe I need to add something that would say, pending, or that subject to council changes, maybe? Something like that.
Or subject to potential near-term revision, or something? Because I, we're not going to be modifying the letter, right?
True, and I feel like, I mean, the typical, this is very typical for what we normally go through. Usually I present the budget and council changes it up, so it's just kind of being changed in a different manner, timeline-wise, so, I mean
If I could comment on that. I totally agree, and we're all more or less familiar with, with how that's gone. It, it just seems, again, I haven't dissected the four hundred and fifty pages yet, but just based on the, I think, seven-page letter, and also based on sort of your letter's sort of on one track, the ARPA and pay increase items are sort of on a different track. It, it seems like if we stay on our current track on this side, we would just be kind of so far apart in a number of ways from your budget that, I don't, personally, I don't know how we would begin our meetings, begin having these meetings in that position, at least without an updated draft proposed FY twenty-three budget from you.
So I think what we'll do is, I know I announced previously that the budget will be posted tomorrow, so that may change that a bit. I'm, I'm okay with the letter being out, I've already shared most of it, and just having that out. And I was going to mention too, and, and Mrs. Perry and your staff, I know, have worked very hard to maneuver a lot of changes, more than I really recall, especially before the budget process has even really started, a lot. And I have to say, you've done it with patience, you've done it very well. I've met with you and Steve, like, a lot since the last council meeting. I feel like we've spent a lot of time discussing items and changes, and while I know that's what you do, and you, you take whatever council's direction, and you put it out there, I want to make sure that, that you're comfortable being able to make the changes and get it to us, and what do you need from us? And I just want to hear from you and see that you're okay with getting this all to us in a timely manner with that timeline.
I think at this point, if we're looking at finishing up on tonight's agenda, that will help us progress with the changes that Councilman Hensley's requesting. We'll do our best to have it ready to go. We'll have an electronic document first, I know some have requested paper copies. Those could be postponed until the first evening that you come to council chambers for the meetings, but electronic copy should be possible.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, if I could just close briefly, I want to thank the mayor, city administrator, all of staff, especially Ms. Perry, Ms. Donaldson, who've been big helps to me personally over the last few weeks on this. Had a fire drill with Emily today, and everything got handled in sweat-free and quick manner. So, for me, anyway, I don't know if it was the same for you, but I thank everyone again for working together on this. And, you know, we're trying to land a few different planes here, all at the same time, and it was going to be stressful and confusing and, and whatnot, but I think we're, we're handling it in a, in a good way. So thank you very much for your patience tonight.
Okay. So we'll make sure and get the meeting cancellations out for this coming Monday and Wednesday's budget meetings, and the first one will be the Thursday after our next council meeting. We'll get all those dates corrected and posted. Thank you. So before we finish out on ARPA's, or anything else, before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay. Item seven, public hearings, we don't have any. There are no appointments by the mayor this evening. Presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, and I do also want to recognize that we have Erin with us for Guns and Hoses. Did you, would you like to come forward and tell us a little bit while you're here about that? Put you on the spot. Presentations from staff, consultants, and you are, are invited guests to talk about. So, and I'll put everybody else on the spot if you haven't either contributed to Team Guns or Team Hoses, and I won't make you raise your hand, but maybe I will. Okay, go ahead, Erin.
Hello. Yeah, I'm with Guns and Hoses, and our game is coming up August twenty-seventh at seven PM. And I'm obviously cheering for Team Hoses this year. Give them a little, little boost of cheer here. Hey, they need to win. They haven't won the last two of them, so.
But we did win all the football games, so that's all.
I wasn't there, I don't know. So yeah, we are still selling tickets and taking donations and sponsorships, so if anybody has any interest, we do have a website, jcmogunsandhoses.com.
All right, so if you want to write a check tonight and get it to Erin tonight, she would appreciate it too.
I'll take it to the bank in the morning.
And August twenty-seventh, yeah. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And to be fair, it is the Firefighters Local Six Seventy-One Golf Tournament on August, it's the first Saturday, wait, first Friday of August? Anybody want to talk about that, Mr. Noah? August fifth. Friday, August fifth. So tell us how we can participate.
Yeah, so we have our annual scholarship charity golf tournament, Jackard Scholarship Tournament, August fifth, that'd be Oak Hills. I believe the tee time is nine o'clock, but I'd had to confirm that with the committee. If you follow our Facebook page, Local Six Seventy-One, it's got all the details on it. We were able to boost our scholarship last year. The gentleman that planned the committee of that organization knocked it out of the park. So we used to do two thousand dollars in scholarships, last year we handed out eight thousand dollars in scholarships to, two thousand dollar scholarships per, and that went out to four local students that are looking at service in public safety, EMS, law enforcement, fire, nursing, and then after that, we look at other criteria to make a determination. But it's always a good time, it's warm, but always good food and a good time, so if you want to put a team in, I think they got a few spots left. We're obviously taking whole sponsorships and everything, and that supports a lot of it.
Great, well, it's only a hundred dollars to sponsor a hole, and
That's right.
So be sure to do that if you haven't already. And good luck with that, and thank you for all that the local does for the community. And I think it's only a hundred dollars for a player, for Guns and Hoses too, so, I think, so. Invite the council and the public to support those causes. Item ten, announcements from mayor, council, and staff. Our meeting schedule is at JeffersonCityMo.gov. On the meeting calendar, we'll go through the four standing committees, starting with administration.
Yes, our next meeting is on August third at seven thirty AM. We'll figure out whether or not we have an agenda coming up shortly, thanks.
Thank you. Item two, finance.
Thank you, Finance Committee meets next, this coming Thursday, the twenty-first, at seven thirty AM across the hall.
Okay, and public safety?
Yes, public safety will meet on July the twenty-eighth, seven thirty AM at the police training room.
Okay, and public works?
Yeah, I'd like to actually announce two meetings. We had a long discussion on the High Street Vi Duck at our last meeting. I've asked staff to try to do a special meeting of the committee. I know everybody's calendars are busy, so we've kind of narrowed it down to noon on July the twenty-seventh. We've got a conflict for the other dates that, that I had proposed, so hopefully our, our committee. We don't anticipate any action, what we'd like to do is just have a focused discussion on that topic. I know there's community conversation about the issues, so we'd just like to get together and just have a discussion of what's potential, where do we go from here? So again, that, that will be on July the twenty-seventh at noon, and we invite the public to come in and, you know, share if there is additional information, then we'll have our regular meeting on Thursday. I believe it's August the eleventh at seven thirty here at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. And for my announcements, I'll mention, and I sent an email to council, that Amtrak has added a second route, a second train through Jefferson City, and they kicked that off today. And that was, it's a big boost and benefit to tourism and visitors and people coming across the state, of course, so that drives and brings revenue to the capital city, anytime we can bring people here and take the train and rely on extra transportation like that. So we're happy to have the, I believe it's the Missouri River Runner, but the Amtrak train. So there's been a lot of media out about that as well, and we invited everybody out. The Convention and Visitors Bureau did a welcome, and there were some people from Chicago from Amtrak that came in, some administration that came in to do the welcome, and the Chamber of Commerce was also on hand to support that. Any other council announcements? All right, and item B, I have Chief Wildey with a couple of announcements for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to highlight two upcoming events that will allow for the opportunity to increase interaction between law enforcement and the community. The first and the one that's coming up the soonest is National Night Out. It'll occur this year on Tuesday, August the second. National Night Out's a nationwide community building campaign that promotes police and community partnership and neighborhood camaraderie. So a lot of neighborhood associations for National Night Out will have a barbecue, they'll have an event where neighbors get together, get to know each other, increase their familiarity, and then invite law enforcement out to talk about crime-related issues, or just make contact with us to increase interaction. So Tuesday, August second, is the nationwide event. However, I will say that during that time of the year, it's generally pretty hot. So we have Na- National Night Out events in Jefferson City staggered out throughout August and September, and we will also attend those. But if you have an event in your neighborhood and you'd like for a police officer to come out, please contact us, and we'll make sure that we get someone there. The second event I'd like to highlight is our Citizens Police Academy. We're taking applications right now, the Citizens Police Academy is a seven-week program. We've reduced that down from ten weeks, we knew that ten weeks was just a lot to commit to, but the Citizens Police Academy, during the seven-week program, we will break down every section, every unit within the Jefferson City Police Department, and give the community an opportunity to come in, ask questions about how we operate, why we do things a certain way, that allows the opportunity for members of the academy to come in and do ride-alongs. And it's a really good opportunity, if you have questions about local law enforcement, to come up, come in and, and really get to know us, and, and how we do things, and why we do what we do. But that Citizens Police Academy will start September seventh, it'll be from six to eight PM on Wednesday evenings, and it will end October nineteenth. And anyone who is interested can call the police department, and we'll direct you how to get an application filled out.
Thank you, Chief Wildey, and I went through that Citizens Police Academy when I was a councilwoman, and it was a very valuable experience, and it's wonderful to offer that to our community and to the citizens, to do that and council members as well, so. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment Chief Wildey, he made a presentation, thanks to Mr. Kroll, at, at our Rotary Club today, talked about, I think the first, or the second project, I'm not sure if he mentioned the other, but I appreciate him getting out into the community and beginning to meet and going to those groups. I mean, we've got some challenges, which he laid out, and I thought it was good for our members to hear that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Deacon?
Yes, Chief Wildey, my, my question is, there's been concerns over the years about the disproportionate number of stops by people of color or different nationalities. Has the, the Human Rights Commission, they reached out, the number of their members want to ride along with you, take part in the academy, so they can really see what's going on?
I have not seen any applications from them, but it might be something worthwhile, that I go to the Human Relations Committee and maybe also advertise there as well. I mean, it'd be a good idea to do so.
Thank you.
Councilman Spencer?
And there, is there a cost associated to that citizen?
There, there is no cost associated.
It's free, so.
Yep, it's free, it's great entertainment, and you'll, you'll, you'll really enjoy the look behind the curtain to see what, what the department's really all about.
Thank you.
Great. And for the National Night Out, could you also email council the list that you have so far of, so that they could attend in their wards?
Yes, I certainly will.
Okay. And I know there's also been, First Presbyterian Church has announced a night, a National Night Out on August, Tuesday, August second, I think at seven PM is what I have down. Also that evening, Tuesday, August second, is apparent education for new drivers, first impact for drivers program at the JCPD classroom that evening, I have that listed tentatively as well. All right, any other announcements? Okay, going on the agenda, item eleven, presentations from, the gallery from, on specific bills. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, I don't think we have anyone signed up though, do we? I mean, other than these two, like, people signed up, okay. We don't have any public comment yet, but we do have item A, Evergreen Solutions Salary Study Update. So we would invite our representatives from Evergreen, if they would like to come to the podium. Oh, I'm sorry.
So we have Ms. Witch, Ms.
We have you on the screen, welcome.
Which is on, on the screen, and I'm going to give an update on where Evergreen Solutions is, and they're conducting the salary update for the city. It's all yours.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, Harry Stacey, Mark Colton, project managers here with Evergreen Solutions. Not only you, but the, Mark Colton, that is, you're giving me this presentation, you did let Mark two go for a couple of days of vacation. So I offered you a presentation for them, if you have any questions along the way, please stop and ask. If I can't answer them, I will actually leave them, and Mark will get back to you next week, if that's where I want to stay. So let's jump into the presentation, I believe it's in the directory there for you, so we'll just kind of walk through this study. I think I have the goals, it's like in the next month. So at that point, is going to give you an overview of the project right now. So we're in the stages of the goals, we're going to come up with project phases, the current system findings, market summary, and then next step. Before I go any further, I just want to check, I've talked a long enough now, can anybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay. Now, the city's goal for this project were to renew the current compensation system. I want to ensure that you have internal equity in the plan. We want to compare to your peer organizations, so you can understand your external capabilities. And then also to produce preparation, and provide you with a compensation system that is applicable both internal and external. And then all of the add-ons that I was adding to mine are two, is that it's physically sustainable, and that it's already also something that's significantly to be, not just today, but then also in the future, okay? Now, your project phases, this is programmed in four different pieces here. It's very simplified, and we obviously have to put an overlap in the actual day-to-day management project. But based on the how we, that's what we're leading to, the project team, the data collection, that understanding, that sort of work, there is a need to be some of our, as they have. We collect all of the data there, and we're moving through the employee database of the project. So it also allows us to have your pay plans, and your compensation philosophies. But now, looking at that data then, it's, what we're doing there is looking to see how your plan is from the structure, does it follow the specific practices? Do we see any, how do we work it below, do we find any areas where we see weaknesses in your plan? Are you utilizing it, or looking for more control, at least, we're looking for compression, between classifications and also favorites. Phase three is the external analysis, that's the market study, that's what we're going to focus on today. So your market studies, where we take a list of your classification, I think it was given to you in this case, and compare them to peer organizations, to see whether you can fall completely compared to those peers. Are you at the top, the upper, in the percentile? Or have you fallen slightly short, and now we're maybe starting ahead? And then phase four is solution, that's where we bring all of the data we collected, the recommendations from moving yesterday, which you currently have in your compensation, compensation system. And then we're looking at the market, and we're looking at how your means are, we're going to build recommendations from this to that plan. Okay, and then also the data implementation options, and different thresholds, to give you some options of how to keep holding on your plan. And then obviously the final. So what have we found so far? So looking at your plan, you're seeing that you right now, your plan is, is very high scale, it's so simple, it's easy to understand, with a lot of consistency in the plan. So as far as the overall structure of it goes, you need a lot of what we call designated practices. Okay, now that's not speaking of price points, or the most salaries, or any points, that's just the operation. And we're looking at your average senior forecast, you see that that's increasing through the pay ranges. I'll look at it, it has a big career series for all of the careers. So this shows that the city is amazing people through ranges, and it looks close to the careers. And that weaknesses, we do find that about eighty-five senior employees from a low endpoint. That's what I'm slide four, I haven't explained that in a while. I think, well, I always call it a slightly. We did find though, that we have eighty-five senior employees below endpoint, and it indicates that that you've got a lot of higher turnover rates, like, you've got a lot of new hire hires, you're hiring people at a lower terms of the payers. You can also be assigned to a non-adjusted confession at a time. So, if the last time you, when I have, I didn't want to be calling you.
If you're online and not on mute, please mute. Oh, Lord. Okay, please mute if you're not on mute. Okay, I think we've got everybody muted. Sorry about that. You can resume.
You are good. Ever since COVID, we've had hospital workers. All right, so we've also seen, right now, was mentioned, we have 85 senior employees below that midpoint. And what that's telling us is a couple of things, I believe you have a ton of rate from what they perceive in the past. Very pressing that you fired, because you also have some kind of adjustment pressure at the time. So, if you have compression previously, if you did an update to your plan five, six, seven years ago, and there was compression then that doesn't address, that just becomes really low time. So, I think that's kind of our result now. We also saw some compression observed with salaries from all the new employees in the city. Now, let's pull that graph up and we'll explain how it's doing. Now, I'll colorize it, and that's like all of the progress. Now, on this graph, which are actually looking at him, the two bar graph there, the stacked graph, along the bottom of that x-axis, that is blue is 133. That's a little have 30 or 30 percent there. Along the y-axis, it's 211 percent, dividing out a percentage, so you can see a percentage of employees represented in totally bars. What I want you to pay attention to is the blue and red column. The blue and red column represents employees within those new classes that are anywhere from 5% behind, or 10% behind, where you anticipate can be placed on time alone, okay? So, that's where you're seeing the compression. Now, keep in mind, this is dated from April. So, any changes, any changes, a lot of organizations are making adjustments right now, or with the programs in place, or products in place, they're making no adjustments. This will not represent even if you have 66 people, because that takes that far time, and that may be late, okay? Excellent? Now, the next slide, that's from market targets. So, these are your peer organizations that we reached out to, like, market data, or they've been using the classifications since, I think, this market survey was started almost two months ago, or a year ago. We're responding here to any non-responsive here provided there on the right-hand side. We do have salary results, 15 of those peers. And all responses were adjusted for cost of living differences, because they came from different areas, right outside of your immediate location, so you're costing living comparisons. So, we did adjust for cost of living, so matching that all to the goal, all right? And then, we have 18 positions that we selected, again, as I said earlier, your average response rate for this was 17, I think it's 700 matches on position. It's a really good solid mapping. What we're looking for is east five. So, that's a very helpful place to be in order to make that decision to be for, based on the data that we have on there, okay? So, next one, here's the questions for tonight. So, the questions for tonight, this is what we ordered input from the board. Is that for our response rate, and will your response rate sufficient to see recommendations? Does the city want to complete that market average, or would it still include a higher percentage? So, rather than 50% of, on that buffer, you want to use slightly more of that, maybe 60% of the percentage. And then also, you can see that, as we record, we still have all the presentation in this case. So, I'm sure one of any one of those questions, if you're back to the slide, we've got questions on them. So, if you see your body, so, if you don't think there's still any questions, that goes on.
Thank you for that report and that information. And so, I'll open it up for questions, and we will also address the three that we have on the screen. Councilman Spencer?
Yes, thank you for your presentation tonight. As it relates to those key questions, how much effort would it take to do both on Question Two?
Oh, so, to look at multiple. The best one that I actually do by August, so I'm in the market as well. So, if we wanted to compare where we all, 30% of, where we fall to 60, perhaps a really simple way to do it.
I would really be interested in that, and really pushing it up to the 75th is what I'd like to see, more than the 60th, but gives a wide range.
Do you want to see 15 to 75?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Kroll?
Would you, maybe, this is Steve, would you explain a little bit, maybe, what that percentile means, 75th, for example?
Yeah, absolutely. So, if you look back to the delta, and I don't think that I can see any or not, I can't tell if I'm discovering, or will have it by market. So, when you look at the delta, 50% of, on that delta, so 50% of employees behind you, 50% of employees, so you're sort of falling at that 75. 60% of your every little bit more aggressive position. 75, if you're going down that delta, it's maybe at 75. So, now, 75% of those, 125% are still 100. As you progress along that delta, in your dependent position, that you see 70, it will increase the cost to the city to beat that level of performance.
Thank you.
And one of those number four, you see where you're falling, if you're looking at the point.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? And then, we'll go back to these, the other key questions. Mr. Kroll?
I was going to say, the other question is on the market, is that correct? Whether the peers?
Yes, do you feel like the peers have been following?
And so, we may want to put that slide back up. One that had the other cities on it, keep going.
He just had it.
There, right there.
So, any suggestions from council on this slide, or are we okay with it? Any objections, or Mr. Kroll?
So, there was a question, I think, about fire districts. Did you have some input on that? Go ahead, yes.
I have a response back, and that was there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a question for you, Ms. Witchy, Ms. Witchy, on fire districts. I know, were they included with some of the cities, or were they needed to be separate, or what?
I believe that more did, more than several, they'd like some fire districts.
So, I don't see any objections to Question One with the peer communities, or Councilman Fitzwater?
Well, I was just going to comment, those look like good pure cities. Some of the ones that did not respond don't seem like their peers anyways. So, I mean, I think the ones that did respond seem like they give us good data. So, I would not hold off to get others on the bottom of the list, because I, I, Ameren may be the, I don't see where that applies to a city. So, I think we've got some, appears good data, I would proceed on.
Okay. So, we have our answer for Question One and Two. Number Three, what was the third? Oh, the timeline. Mr. Kroll?
I'm just going to ask, Ms. Witchy, what, how long does it take to finish up a report to start getting solutions and those kinds of things?
So, there's two phases to that. I think especially we have to come out and to, for the middle one, before your son or your pre-children, the budget time is right now, I don't forget the whole separate experience myself, I don't know how hectic the budget times are. The, if you do that solution file, if you do those recommendations, it's going to allow you to develop some other numbers. I would anticipate that in the office, we should all have a final, solid estimate of cost in the report we developed soon now.
Okay, I don't see why we'd want to delay it any more than that. If you could stick with that timeline, that would be helpful as we're going through the budget process. Any other? Councilman Spencer?
Yeah. Is there a way to even fast-track it a little bit more? Because by the end of August, and did she say the end of September to get solutions out? I mean, that's, we may or may not be done with the budget process, but personnel cost is kind of something I would like to see more solidified and earlier on in the budget process. So, if there's a way we could, you know, shorten that timeline, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, let me just clarify really quick. So, when I was talking about the end of August, I'm talking about a final solution. And that is a solution file, obviously, the cell book, that would have all of the contributions, cost estimates, total cost organization, and it would have that, for employees, you can look and see what we meant in individuals. That would be in the final grade upon, we would be developing an initial lawsuit in that, it was your fourteen, provide input, need to make adjustments. I would anticipate going for a couple of different versions of that before you put on hold. So, that would give me your budget number referring to, possibly marking the report done at the same time, I just didn't want to call the report also without.
I think there's council interest in trying to get it sooner rather than later.
Okay, okay. I will share that with Mark, and listen up to the chief's final remarks.
Okay, thank you. Any last questions of council? Okay, thank you for the presentation. And as we've put a lot of focus into the fact that our employees are our biggest asset, and we want to make sure that, that's why we've, as a council, have been very interested in the outcome of the Evergreen Salary Solutions Update. And if you could see in the council chambers, it is filled with several employees tonight as well, and we appreciate that very much, and their interest in the salary study and solutions, and also interest in the budget item upcoming. So, thank you all. Next is Item B. We have an update from Luke Holzschneider, Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership in Coal County, regarding the Coal County Proposed Multimodal Transload Facility. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, Luke Holzschneider, Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership. Glad to be here this evening. Apologies for those at Public Works last week. It's going to be somewhat of a repeat, but with a packed agenda, I'll keep it fairly brief. But reason here tonight, okay, there we go, is to talk about the proposed multimodal transload facility. So, we're looking at a mid-Missouri multimodal transload facility in the Algo Industrial Park in eastern Jefferson City. So, the proposed project will connect to the current rail line, which I believe, it's hard to see in the photos, but is the green line just south of Alpla and Morris Packaging, as well as Command Web. So, we're looking to connect to the existing spur line and run it west about 3,500 feet, where you're seeing the pink line would be the new rail extension. In total, about 3,500 feet of new spur line. In total, the multimodal site will encompass roughly 26 acres, include the spur extension, three loading and unloading tracks, truck-loading drives, as well as additional infrastructure improvements on the site. The spur currently, as well as the new extension, will be owned by Coal County. The county does intend to procure a multimodal operator once the site is constructed, but it will continue to be publicly owned throughout its life. So, just an additional view of the site, a little more drilled in, but the initial design was intended to serve industries both directly in Jefferson City and Coal County, as well as regionally, that may not currently have rail access to their existing sites. As well, it's an opportunity to help attract new industries as an additional logistics and transportation asset here in Jefferson City. When this concept was first being discussed late last calendar year, we did some initial outreach to existing industries here in central Missouri. We received about 20 responses from private industries, capturing about six counties, including Coal, in which they expressed support and interest in utilizing the facility once constructed. As well, the State Department of Economic Development provide written support, as well as Union Pacific. And so, what we did was, we then pursued a preliminary engineering report, which broke down the cost for a total project cost of roughly $3.16 million for the rail line extension and the infrastructure upgrades to the facility. In March of this year, the County of Coal, in conjunction with the Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission, applied to EDA, the Economic Development Administration, which is a federal agency within the U.S. Department of Commerce, for $1.5 million. We were notified in May of this year as well, that the project received, or merits further consideration, which means that you've made it past the initial review. It's just finalizing the paperwork, but assuming no change of course or action on the local part, the project has a very strong likelihood of being approved. We do anticipate a final federal decision still this summer, if not by early fall, for that $1.5 million. And so, due to a quick response from EDA on their commitment to the project, or their conveyed interest in supporting the project, we were notified that the Missouri Department of Transportation, through their freight enhancement funds, increased that fund for fiscal year '23, beginning July 1 of this summer. And so, we met with the local project team. Determination was made that we should submit this for consideration. That program fund traditionally has about $1 million appropriated per year. Fiscal year '23, it was increased to $3 million. So, we, very quickly, as the budget was passed at the state and the guidelines were released, applied for the MoDOT Freight Enhancement Funds. In early June, we were notified about 10 days ago, or the county was, that the project was selected among, I think there were roughly, I think, 11 projects that were submitted. And we were, we were approved at our, at our requested amount of $880,000 for the project as well. MoDOT funds are a fiscal year appropriation fund, so it's a quick turnaround from the point of approval to expenditure. So, we'll have from this date until June 15 of 2023 to incur costs and expend those funds for this project. So, it's a, it's going to be a very quick-moving project, but wanted to give the full council an update on this project, as it's really from concept in late November of this past year to where we're at today, of having nearly 75% of the funds committed to the project from federal and state partners. Really exciting project. It's been a partnership both with the county, as well the city, and private participation as well along the way. So, have Eric Landware with me from Coal County Public Works to give an update on what we have moving forward. And then, if there's any questions, I can help answer those as well after Eric.
Thank you, welcome, Mr. Landware.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Really quick, I'll go through the timeline going forward. As Luke explained, it's a quick project to pull together. It's going to be as quick to put it together out for construction. So, we need to have the first phase of the project bid out by January. Second phase will go mid-year, give or take. To pull that together, it was determined in talking with city staff, the best plan would be that the county would enter into the development agreement with the private entity we're working with. We will also front the money, this will be a cooperative project. The county will front the money for the 800 or so thousand portion. That will, we'll front that, and then pick up a later agreement with the city on future cooperative projects. So, that's exciting to get that going. As Luke said, this, we will, after everything's done, we would entertain proposals for an operator, which is a big deal for us. This had, the rail spur has been a county-maintained project. For the majority of it, the city does own the Crossing on Militia Drive, and expended quite a bit of funds. For the majority of it, the city does own the crossing on Militia Drive and expended quite a bit of funds two years ago to improve that. We want to have an operator that can generate some revenue for the rail spur and ultimately maybe pay for itself, or at least pay a good portion of it. So that's the plan going forward. It's a big, quick project to turn around. A lot of partners pulling together to make it happen, and it's exciting to see it done. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and Luke can probably fill in others as well.
Mr. Kroll?
So you're talking about the city's contribution and the county's contribution outside of the grant pieces and whatever the local operator being, coming from the joint sales tax.
Yes, this would come from the joint, cooperative projects, the sales tax portion of that. And as I said, we will handle the upfront and then pick up a later project with the city and balance things out as time evolves.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, thank, thank you both for progressing on this project at laser warp speed, so to speak. But my question is, is that just for public education-wise, there, is, is the barge, is the river modal project, is it still a possibility, or is this in place of that?
So this is not in place of the Hartland Port in that potential location. It is in close proximity to one of the potential sites for the Hartland Port location, which is between the Missouri National Guard and Jeff City Correctional Center. But this does not connect or tie directly into that.
But that's still being...
Correct, correct. There's, there's some engineering work being done on that project right now. You got it.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you. It's always good to have the county here. Thank you, Mr. Landware. And Item 12, Consent Agendas. There are motion to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill's introduced, 2022-30.
An ordinance design, an ordinance designating a certain tract of land in the city of Jefferson, Missouri is oblied area, approving the development plan for the Simonsen Redevelopment Project, approving a development agreement in connection with the development plan, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take act, certain other actions in connection therewith.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. Before I get started, I just want to point out that Alan Witt from Takeoff Development is here. She'll be available to answer any questions specifically about the project and probably any timeframes, the interesting things. But I will talk about this bill in particular. So this bill declares the Simonsen School property blighted, which is a prerequisite of tax abatement under Chapter 353 of the Missouri statutes, and then also approves a the 25-year tax abatement at 100% of the taxes. This, this, this ordinance approves a development plan that will specify how that takes forth. It's fairly simple. They will restore the Simonsen School and establish multifamily residential apartments at the, at the site. And so essentially, this, this bill kind of checks all the appropriate statutory boxes in order to provide that 25-year tax abatement at a rate of 100% of the real property taxes. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, or I'm sorry, that's introduced. Look at me tonight. Okay, introduced. And then the next one is also about Simonsen, 2022-31.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bond, Simonsen Redevelopment Project Series 2022, in a principal amount not to exceed $25 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and improving a facility for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection therewith.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This bill approves a bond transaction between the city and the developer to and the purpose is to effectuate sales tax exemption under Chapter 100. As the council is likely aware, we've done lots and lots of Chapter 100 deals where we're providing personal property tax abatement. In this case, there is no personal property tax abatement. The incentive that's trying to be reached here is the sales tax exemption. So during, during the pendency of construction, the city will own the building, the project, as it's being built, and then will be leased to the, to the developer, so that they can actually build it. This is it's essentially a paper transaction to, once again, kind of fulfill the statutory requirements to allow for the sales tax exemption to buy materials to construct the project. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Great work on the Incentives Task Force working together about this as well over the years with...
There, there will be a public hearing on this, on, on this package at the next council meeting. That's, once again, a statutory requirement. But the tax abatement, tax impact statement has been mailed out to the necessary taxing districts, including the school district, who is, of course, the most affected taxing district by, by this type of real property tax abatement. But they'll have the opportunity to address the city council directly, but the, the school district, county, and the taxing districts have been a longtime partner. This is a project that's a long time in the coming.
Yes, they have. I think this is one of the projects I get asked about most frequently and a lot of interest and enthusiasm for it in the community to see it come back to life after the tornado. So thank you, Mrs. Witt, for being here tonight and taking that on. Any other questions? Okay, 2022-32.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This item would authorize $500,000 of the American Rescue Plan Funds to Lincoln University for their Health Science and Crisis Center project.
Any council discussion? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. If I could make a brief comment on, not, actually not this particular bill, but all of these first-read ARPA bills. I think we're going to have some proposed amendments that come up between 33 and 39 here that will, that would free up funding that has been initially allocated, initially identified for, for these uses, but that we would use instead to fund the, to fund the revenue loss reimbursements related to the fund balance replenishment and the 4% of average salary increase for the rest of the fiscal year that we discussed, that we discussed earlier. So when, when there are changes made or proposed for the rest of these bills, that's what, that is the, the purpose of those bills, is to relate to that, to that other funding. And we won't be voting on these tonight anyway, but it's probably still a good idea to amend, to amend them to the extent that we, we think we, we may need to.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley.
Thank you.
Anything on that particular bill? Okay, we'll go on to number 2022-33.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This would propose using $200,000 of American Rescue Plan Funds for fire department radios.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Mayor, I move to strike this bill from our agenda. I guess, I think that's the appropriate... I think that's appropriate mechanism to get rid of it. Is that correct?
Essentially, a request that it not appear on the next agenda.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I also should have mentioned that before putting together these items for proposed cuts, I did consult with police and fire personnel and was really grateful to receive an open response and to receive their, their support for these particular items.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then in my proposed budget, I have moving that to the public safety tax. Is that the intent?
I'm not sure about the down-the-road intent, but we can, we can work on that.
Okay.
I mean, that particular use makes sense, of course.
Okay.
And that's what was going to wind up reimbursing this expenditure anyway, so.
Right. Okay, so that one will not appear on the next agenda.
There is a motion on the floor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilman Fitzwater?
Can you just repeat the form of the motion?
Sure. The motion is a motion to strike, which essentially is a request that it not appear on the next agenda. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. 2022-34.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This would authorize the use of $635,670 of American Rescue Plan money for police department body cameras and car cameras.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I would move to amend this bill in two ways. The first way is by changing the amount to $455,670. And the second way is to change the use to local grant matching funding.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Anything to add, Captain Wildy, on that particular item?
No, that'll suffice.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. I'm sorry, Councilman Hensley?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was getting ready for the next one.
For 2022-35?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize the use of $540,000 of American Rescue Plan Funds for city facility-related projects.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I would move to amend this bill in two ways. The first would be to change the amount sought to $200,000. And the second would be to amend the purpose to be only for police station elevator replacement.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. 2022-36.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize the use of $1 million of American Rescue Plan Funds for MSP redevelopment project.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Item 2022-37.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize the use of $325,000 of American Rescue Plan Funds for city infrastructure and capital projects.
Any questions, discussion? Okay, 2022-38.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize the use of $1,925,000 of American Rescue Plan Funds for the Hyde Park Burn Building.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I would move to amend this bill by changing the amount sought to $1.6 million.
Second.
There's a motion and second to change it to 1.6. Any further discussion?
I will, I will say also, I know that we're not voting on it finally tonight. But this would be one that would make sense to let ride on the informal for a little while until we get solid answers on potential other sources of funding, in my opinion.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. 2022-39.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving funding and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize the use of $100,000 in American Rescue Plan Funds for the United Capital City Soccer Complex Project.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Mollman?
So as, as a funding source for outside group, this will likely take some sort of grant, grant agreement or development agreement, or some sort of agreement between the city and the, and the, and the nonprofits. I just want to make the council aware that there'll be some additional steps other than just approving the funding.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, and bill's pending, 2022-27.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Concrete Solution LLC in the amount of $550,448.95 for the Adams Street Sidewalk 2022 project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this is a $550,000 project. Majority of that's coming from CDBG funds, approximately $313,000, and the rest out of CIP sidewalk sales tax money. Concrete Solutions has done other projects for the city, and they've done a great job, and, and we'd be happy to have them on this project. The, within those funds, alternancy was included, which would extend the sidewalk from Woodlawn to Union Street, and that would tie into the new Jefferson City sports facilities being under construction currently. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions or deliberation? Councilman Fitzwater?
I'll just kind of make a comment. I just wanted to compliment staff on their work on this. We've had a lot of discussions over the past couple of years at the Public Works and Planning Committee on infrastructure within this city and trying to rebuild. And I appreciate their work in helping us find some dollars to supplement this project. We've got a lot of needs throughout our city. We can only fix them one at a time, and I appreciate the work that they've done to help us start this, this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer? Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2022-29.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving an essential worker payment and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds as outlined in Exhibit A.
Mr. Kroll?
This bill would authorize the use of American Rescue Plan money for essential worker payments of $2,500 per employee.
Any council discussion or deliberation? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. This appears to be based on a 420-employee set, which I think is it should be just about everybody, right? And I think it's an essential part, not only of our ARPA plan, but also of our overall approach at attempting to address the, the salary challenges that we're facing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other deliberation? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer? Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 15, Informal Calendar, 2022-9.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving a salary adjustment as outlined in Exhibit B and amending the FY 2022 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds within the various city funds outlined in Exhibit A.
And the bill sponsor, Councilwoman Wiseman, has indicated she would like to, or I'll call on you.
Oh, no, that's okay. I just was going to ask Mayor to remove that and put it on, on the agenda today.
Okay, we will take this up. Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move that the council take up for consideration, I'm sorry, I didn't say that right, substitute number three for this bill that was, that has been perhaps more than once circulated with the council.
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to substitute number three. So what we'll do first is take a vote on substituting number three, and then we will take up the bill as substituted. Correct, Mr. Mollman?
So unfortunately, substitutes take 24 hours, so we're going to have to do this as a floor amendment. So essentially, we need to call out the things that are being amended in the bill and, and they're being replaced. I think this can be done fairly easily, though. So in Section 1 of 22009, there is a number that is 498,066.79. What I understand, a substitute three, that number should be the total of
Hey, Ryan?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt you. Does it make any difference that I submitted this? Sorry to interrupt you. Does it make any difference that I submitted this last Monday and asked for it to be included in this packet? I mean, I guess you can go through with what you're doing, but I mean, this was, there was ample notice for inclusion of this substitute tonight. I know that you're talking about a different type of notice.
Yeah, I, yes, it's, it's a more formal type of notice, and the fact that it didn't appear in the agenda is probably the determining factor. So. Just do the math right here.
Which page are you on? Or what are you looking at?
I am on the first page of what's marked as substitute three.
Okay. Is there, is there a way to move to amend what is in the current bill or substitute to align with what I would now put on the table? Like, do we have to sit here and say all these words, or can we just refer to these exhibits and ask for changes to be made in conformance with the exhibits? What I'm afraid of is something being said incorrectly on accident or transposed, and then we're in a whole other, because you're about to list off like a whole bunch of numbers. So can we just, can I present it as a paper floor amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. I would do so at this time.
So we have an amendment to the substitute? No, amendment to the original bill?
So, yeah, yeah, so the, it's, this is, this is an amendment to the original bill.
Madam Mayor, I would like to amend the original bill to conform with what I've circulated and titled in error, substitute number three.
I would second that.
Okay, so first, we'll take a vote to accept the amendment, then we will take up the bill as amended.
Yes, thank you.
So any questions before we take that vote? Councilman Spencer?
Just for clarification, so that everybody's on the same page, we are not moving the pay grades with this, with this bill.
Correct.
And the dispatcher portion, when would that, when would that be reflected in the first paycheck?
It could be processed in the next paycheck.
And can we give that, get the dispatchers' personnel action forms as well to reflect their old salary to your?
They don't need personnel action forms. I mean, that's just a paper that we use here that goes in their personnel files.
But we, we did at one time would reflect what you were previously making per hour to what your adjusted salary would be with any increases.
You want them to know what that, that difference is. We can provide some information in that.
We could send them each something or send all of them, because it's the same number for all of them.
I'd like to see that, yes.
Mr. Kroll.
So I, I don't know that I understood the, on item number two, the exclusion of the chief of police. Was that the current chief of police, or was that in a reference to the previous? Because I need to go, you see? On, so I, I'm on the, the substitute item number two.
That's the same language that we've used throughout the course of this discussion on this particular point. So is there a reason not to include, not to exclude the current chief?
I, I don't know why we would exclude the current chief of police if you're making a salary adjustment for everybody else.
Scott?
Well, to, to maybe clarify, I think some, the timeline was when, when this was first proposed, it was still the current.
Yeah.
I mean, the former.
Correct.
Police chief.
And I didn't.
I, I, I agree that we should probably adjust that for the current newly promoted police chief to reflect that. So that would probably have to be an amendment for that, and I, and I'll propose that.
Second.
Okay, so we have, do we need to accept, or do we need, we already have a motion and second for the first, for the substitute?
We're just amending the amendment, right? To remove chief of police.
All right. Are we good? All right, we have a motion and second to amend the amendment.
I would, I'd like to, yeah. I'm thinking easier path. Has the amendment been adopted? I'm sorry, I'm losing.
No.
Little track here. An easier path may be for the motion maker and the seconder to accept that as part of the amended.
I accept.
Councilwoman Wiseman also, okay.
Great.
So.
Well done.
Anything further? If not, we will take, oh, Mrs. Perry?
Councilman Spencer asked about when this could be effective. I just want to point out that all of the figures that Councilman Hensley has in his motions and projections are based on a July 29th pay cycle. So it's the very next pay cycle for all of the things that are represented here.
I, my point was, I just was wanting to make sure we implemented as soon as possible, again, the very next paycheck if possible for all the employees. So, thank you.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we will take up the bill 20229 as amended. Thank you. Couldn't remember if it was amended or substituted, amended. And discussion, Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I'll just walk through this briefly. And so the, the first item on exhibit B now is to increase communications operators' minimum pay up to at least $40,000 and to maintain current pay separations among the employees there. The second item, which for clarity's sake, because we've already crossed this bridge once, the order here I view as somewhat important, at least conceptually, in that for the communications operators, that $40,000 I think goes into effect for them, as we've discussed before. And then they are also included in, in item number two, right? They're not left out of number two because of, simply because of getting this correction up to 40. So item number two is a, an increase for each employee who's not the city administrator or a sworn position covered by the FOP contract of, that equals 4% of the average employee salary here in the city. So that amount came out to $2,040 per employee, and I think it was, I believe it was something like 340 employees, but don't quote me on that, but I think that's around right. And the reason that I made this proposal at this point, especially after last week's conversation, or last meeting's conversation and other conversation we've, we've had, I just wanted to streamline it enough so that we could get something done in the interim and really focus on making it stick going forward. But right now, I wanted to get this pay increase through for them, and it was made possible, of course, through kind of intertwining our efforts with ARPA. But, you know, I'm still totally committed to further salary adjustments, such as the ones proposed by Councilman Spencer, which, some of which were included in, in the last substitute that we were looking at. I think, though, that the cost and complexity of how some of those would move was probably more than the process could handle right now in the short term. So, I mean, hardly any of this is everything that any of us would want, but I think this is a nice bit of progress that hopefully we can, we can build on going forward. And then, of course, the, the $2,500 essential worker payment that we, that we just approved a moment ago was, was the other piece of this. So the cost for this, the total cost of the 4% increase through the end of the fiscal year was 275,859. The general fund portion of that is 91,442. And then also the through end of year public safety tax expense for the communications operator, $40,000, or $40,000 piece is just over $25,000. Yeah, so I put that out there for discussion and moved that we accept this, this approach and that we finish our work on this particular item for now.
Any other discussion on the bill? Councilman Spencer?
And I echo that, Councilman Hensley, as well. I, I think we just got confirmation, again, with the issue of compression. And, you know, that longevity piece that I proposed was to address that, you know, part of that. So I just want to share and stand behind you that I'm, will work with you to try to get something along those lines to, to address compression, because it is really putting a stranglehold on, on our folks that have been here, like I say, between 20 and 25 years and having reached, reached midpoint in their pay grade. So, thank you.
Thank you. I totally agree.
Any other discussion, deliberation, questions on the bill? Councilman Fitzwater?
I was just gonna add to that discussion. I know Councilman Lester had some ideas that were incorporated, so I think there's been a lot of work. I agree with Councilman Hensley that this is a good first step that I think at least shows the commitment of council to address this very serious issue. Councilman Spencer spent a lot of time on it. I know Councilman Hensley has, and I know Councilman Lester did. So I think this is a good partnership of ideas that gets us into the next budget cycle, and I anticipate, as the councilman indicated, that we're gonna have some very robust discussions, but that's what we're here for. So I appreciate all the work's been done on this.
Thank you, and I appreciate the commitment of council to seeing this through. I know I pretty much laid it all out at the last council meeting, how I felt about it, but I'm very thankful to see that during the last couple of weeks that council has been able to come up with something, and it seems like we have some support here, which makes me relieved and, and happy to see that. So roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes. And also a thank you to the employees who are here this evening as well, and appreciate all of the work and patience of our employees as well. Number 16 resolutions, resolution 2216.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Jefferson, Missouri to apply for community, community development block grant disaster recovery funding.
Mr. Sanders?
I'm gonna let Ms. Sinzy cover this. She has been working on the program for quite a bit and certainly deserves the acknowledgement in giving this presentation for the resolution.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Sinzy, Neighborhood Services Supervisor. We are requesting that council approve a proposal to be submitted to the, to the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development that allows us to release $7,59,300.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get right up next to it.
Perfect, thank you.
We are requesting that the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development release $7,59,300 that was made available to Cole County with the city of Jefferson being the lead applicant to go towards housing recovery that stemmed from the 2019 tornado. Within your packet is the proposal that will be submitted, along with the budget that we have outlined, that will be in the programs that will be forthcoming. We will also be going to the county commission tomorrow to request their approval through resolution for this proposal as well. The proposal is due July 31st. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sinzy? Councilman Fitzwater?
Again, not really a question, but just a thank you. We've had a lot of discussions on low and middle income housing in this community, and, I mean, I think people around this table understand the needs, and I appreciate the work that has been done to try to identify dollars that help us move down that line. So again, thank you very much. We've got a long way to go, but I do think you have some public forums or meetings where you're gonna be asking for input. So I would encourage the public to be a part of this process as much as we can.
Yes, anytime that we put out an unmet needs assessment or a public meeting, that is the community's opportunity to come forth and, and directly express where you think our community development block grant dollars should go.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Ward? Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Resolution passes. Item 17, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone here to speak or online? Okay, seeing none. Item 18, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 19, any new business? 20, I need a motion to approve the July 5th, 2022 closed session minutes.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Spicer?
Ward? Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Motion passes. Item 20, can't even see, whatever, 21, unfinished business? And 22.
I move to adjourn, Mayor.
All right, and I think that's seconded by everybody. All in favor say aye. Thank you. Have a great evening.